We're good. So I would like to thank everybody for joining us tonight. We may have some people out on YouTube watching us as well here. This is our February 12 Finance Committee meeting and would like to say before we get things started and before I turn things over to Mr. Juswick, our business director, is just going back to our February Committee meeting, I think all of us found was extremely productive. I think what we recognized is that the board agreed on a very solid, well-thought strategic plan moving forward in a new way to create budgets for the Carlinson School District. After that meeting, shortly after that meeting is when the pandemic hit and as the outcome of that occurred, we recognized significant challenges now with our budget, especially in regard to the revenue side of things that we are trying to do some forecasting with. That creates an environment that can be very difficult for really all municipalities and all public systems throughout the state of Pennsylvania as well as across the country. Mr. Juswick has a little bit, some very detailed information about the state of the budget as it currently is, and he would like to share that now with the public. So Mr. Juswick, I'll turn things over to you.
Okay, everybody hear me? Okay, if I, if I cut it out, Dr. Carter, give me a wave because my computer's been having some issues with that, as we've seen before. So the first shared spreadsheet I have up here right now, this is just our general budget update. I've been trying to do these per board meeting, give us a little more consistency and show where we're at last year compared to this year. Overall, I have the codes 300 through 900. What that essentially is, is all money outside of salary and benefits. So that's every other expenditure we have that's not a salary, benefit, or taxes at that point, or workers' comp and things such as that. So in the rest of those expenses, I want to show what we have remaining in our budget at this point of the year. So in 2018-19, at this point of the year, at April 30th, we have $1.4 million left. This year with COVID, some of the things, the transportation expense is not, not coming in at this point and such, we're at $1.92 million. So we're about 520 better than we were last year with what we have remaining in the expense budget outside of salary and benefits. Also, want to show the overall position of the district. Last year at this time, we were at $20.76 million. This year we're at $20.61 million. If you notice on line, line 20 here, our budget is $29.58 million for 1920, $28.41 million for 1819. So our expenses are lower this year at this point overall through the budget through April 30th than they were as of 1819, when we have $1.1 million in budget expenses higher. And like I said, some of the COVID has slowed those expenses by quite a bit. And this is available, we can always, this can be posted on the website and such if we feel this is useful information for the budget reports and such. So this next area is the same thing. This goes more through the departments of our regular ed, transportation, principal's office, business office, everything through the district athletics, debt service. So there's a comparison. Ultimately, those are the same numbers that are in the expense budget.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If you go back up to by function code, line, yeah, line, hang on a sec, 34, transportation, we see a significant difference. Now, there's a couple of things, as I recall, with transportation. One was you guys did a great job with restructuring the routes that produced a lot of savings.
Yes.
Also seeing some savings related to the schools being shut down with COVID. Is that number there, is that more reflective of one than the other, or is it both, or what is that?
So to this point right now, so we receive, we shut down March 13th. So we're about a half month short of bills. I would say a half month short of bills is probably about 60,000, 70,000 of that. So I think we have pretty good savings. It could be around 200,000 at this point from the reduction of routes.
Okay.
March bills. That is not the April bills because, you know, timing wise, we don't get billed till the following month.
On top of that, there'll be some savings from COVID as well?
Now it will all be saving. Anything going forward will be savings from COVID.
That number will be bigger by the end of the year. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. That's great. Thanks.
No problem.
Chris, I've got one question.
Sure.
So, but this is, is this a comparison to the budget as forecast last year, or is this a comparison to last year's actuals? It's last year's actuals, right?
It's a comparison to actuals from last year.
Okay, yeah, so this is 2019 to 2020 actuals versus, or 2018 to 2019 actuals versus where we are now, same period.
Yeah, as of April 30th.
Thanks, yeah.
Right on. And then I put, and I also have the budget up here, so you can just see the budgeted numbers. So, so, no problem. So if we go into revenue at this point of this year, April 30th. So this year at this point, we're at $24.4 million. Last year we were at $23.3 million. So we're about $1.1 million above in, in revenue. The big, out of that $1.1 million, local taxes, EIT, real estate collections and such is, we're about $500,000 over last year's real estate collection. So that makes up a big number. That's 678. And then the rest of the funding is kind of cash flow where, you know, when the basic education funding goes up, because we didn't have a $300,000 increase in a basic education funding through the state last year. So it's just cash flow. And as you can see, we have, we only budgeted about 6, 7, $700,000 more in the budget this year. We're 1.1 over as of April 30th. Right now, I can show you where we're at May. Now, last year, the basic education subsidy of about $1.1 million came in to wrap, to wrap up that portion of the subsidy, which that at the end of May put us at $25.68 million. Right now, we're 10 days through May. We haven't got that remainder of the basic education subsidy. We're $24.87 million. So we're only about $800,000 off of where we were in May right now. We're 10 days through the month. Now we'll have some additional EIT coming in this month. Local real, local real estate is done for the most part. The big, big one we're hoping hits in May is the basic education funding. Last year that hit May 31st for $1.1 million. I think we have ballpark around that area that should be hitting. And like I said, we're, we're in a good spot. And at the bottom here, if I go back to April, our surplus at the moment, now this will change, is we leave our expenses open till about September as bills flow in through the previous year. But our surplus right now is 3.8. Last year at this time, it was 2.5 million. And last year, we ended up with a $311,000 surplus. So what we're going to need every dollar with what we could see with all the, with all the COVID. And on the other end of it too, we are expecting the local income tax revenue accrual to be lower this year because everybody started losing their jobs and such around, you know, March 13th through the weeks as unemployment has skyrocketed. I don't want to say unfortunately, but unemployment is not taxed at the local level. So we are going to see a loss in our local income tax. We'll just have to see it at this point. I think fortunately, we're in a good enough position where we should still be able to hit our budgeted revenue if not exceed it by, by, by an amount. So that's, that's a budget report. That's the budget report for this month. And then we'll get into the presentation unless anybody has any questions on that. Good to go? All right. All right. Does everybody see the budget presentation on the screen right now?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I'll get it the full screen. View. Okay, so here's our 2021 proposed final budget. I hope everybody's not getting too bored of this format, but we keep the school colors. This is the proposed budget. We need to, would approve this May 31st. Advertisers posted. We have till June 10th to do that. We'll do that once that's approved. At that point, we will have time to submit the final budget in June, which currently with everything going on, I could see anything happening as we get more and more information on how we should be, how we should budget, how the states come. But we'll review that through this. We're going to go through the fund balance overview, COVID-19 revenue decreases, expense budget overview with concerns going forward in a five-year outlook. We did go over some of, some of these slides and information will be the same as January, but we have updated with some of the current situation we're in. So this is a slide we've used in a graph. We use to kind of show the ebbs and flows of our fund balance and where it's gone from 630, 2015 to what a projection, a conservative projection of where we think we'll be at on 630, 2020. Fortunately, the past couple of years, we've been able to add a little bit back to the fund balance, get us back up to almost $3.1 million. Our hope is this year, and like I said, we're going a little conservative right now because my concern is that local revenue tax. And if there is a slowing of some bills based on the fact that people aren't at work, some companies have completely shut down and such. So with that $711,000 budgeted deficit that we originally have, I have for 400,000 in this preliminary budget. I think, well, I do believe we'll get better than that. I'm hoping to come to more of a balanced budget, give or take $200,000. So I think we will be in a better position at the June 30th, 2020, once we get the audit in and everything and all the accrues are in.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah.
When you say, when you say conservative, do you mean you're, which way are you airing? Are you airing?
Airing to the bad.
To the bad. So you're, when you say conservative, you mean higher, higher expenses, lower revenue versus the other way around?
I expect I had a $400,000 pullout of the fund balance when I submit this preliminary budget. My, I do think one that more closer to a balance within a $200,000 window.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, no problem. So as I said, if I get knocked off at any point, please wave because my volume's not on the, on the bottom here. Okay, so revenue and expense summary. Hit on a couple of points. As we said back in January, we have increased our fund balance the past couple of years. And like I said, credit goes to the administration staff and for making recommendations. And I think we've kept some pretty good programs. So we've been able to do some things and increase some, increase the fund balance. Now, the COVID-19 pandemic, it is having an extreme effect on our economy right now. Record highs in unemployment. You know, the economy just is not open at the moment. In our preliminary budget in January, we had a deficit of $859,000. With, with some of the enrollment decreases and such, we've had, we were getting into that $450,000 range of a budgeted deficit. Now we're at $1.39 million. And this is due to some of the things of the expected losses of local income tax, all local revenues, local income tax, delinquent tax collections, realty tax transfers, real estate tax collections. We do have some concerns about those things, but the issue is it's all unknown. What we can guarantee is the local income tax with some of the unemployment rates. The expectation is we do see a decrease in that. Once again, we'll, we'll get into some of that information a little bit later in the presentation. So originally in the preliminary budget, we, we budgeted revenue at $29.848 million. Now we're at $28.992 million with a milage rate of 25.1815. Once again, this may have the ability to decrease further by the final budget. There are certain, certain laws that will, that could go, could be enacted or certain bills that could be passed that, that would limit the control we have to produce revenue from the district's end. And there's very little we can produce revenue on. And then also, like I just previously mentioned, all the other impact we felt from COVID-19 at this point. So and also in the preliminary budget, our expenses were about 30.7 million. Now we're down to 30.3 million since the January submission of that preliminary budget. So we have brought some of those expenses down.
Hey, Chris.
Yes.
Before we move on, maybe you've already hit on this and I just missed it, but your budgeted revenue, what are you basing that on? What projections? What, where, where are those numbers being provided by?
How did that fall down from January?
Well, I mean, what, what, is it, is it coming from, you know, like PSBA or, or the state or?
Well, okay, I see what you're saying. So PASBO has given us recommended numbers. So they said, hey, your local income tax, we expect that to drop 15 to 25%.
PASBO is, PASBO is?
Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. So, so that's, that's with all the, all the businessmen, most of the business managers in Pennsylvania, if not almost all of them, are a part of that organization. And they also reach out on, you know, bills that are being passed, projections they see. And most of, most of the people higher up, the officials that work for PASBO are business managers that have been in it 40, 45 years that are retired and go into that. And so they provide just a ton of information for business managers. So, yeah, they gave us a lot of projections on things. And one of them was the local income tax. They expected a 15 to 25% decrease. I budgeted that at a 15% decrease of what we originally planned from the, from the preliminary budget back in January. They were expecting a 2% to 5% decrease on the property tax. I've talked to some experienced business managers and such. They were around the 2%. So we went with that. And with where we'll be at our milage rate, that will save us a little bit on that because if, if we weren't adjusting our milage rate, that would, that would go the opposite direction. We'd be budgeting about 500,000 less than we brought in this year. And I spoke to Andrews and Price, Tony Giglio, about our delinquent taxes. PASBO was a little more aggressive with what they thought we would lose on the delinquent taxes. But Tony's estimation was we were at 750. So instead of us going down, say, 30% on that, we went from our collections of 895 the previous year to about 750. So we weren't as aggressive on the losses in delinquent taxes. And then realty transfer tax, I forget the exact percentage, but say we brought in 159, I brought it to around maybe 106,000. So I've tried to stay consistent with what PASBO is telling us, but also not overestimating and doing a dooms, complete doomsday scenario.
Thanks, appreciate it.
No problem. But you can also see where that was about a $900,000 flip from our preliminary budget. So if you add in, if we were at the current, our current milage rate, take away another 600,000, we go from 900,000 down to $1.5 million. We lose in revenue and are at almost a 200,000, or a $2 million deficit right now in this proposed final budget, even with some of the cost savings we currently had from where, where we had that decrease in expenditures. One of the things that's pretty critical with all this is the COVID unemployment concern. I, PASBO provided this slide also for that, for the organization, business managers are in, where as you can see, the ebbs and flows, and sorry, I can't point at my, I'm pointing at my screen as if you guys can see me. But you can see the, for through 2011, when we hit a high in unemployment and then just the massive immediate spike with their expectation of unemployment to hit 16%. So that's why you're going to see those major hits in local income tax revenue. It, it just jumped, it jumped at no rate it's ever jumped in the history of the US. So this is a general slide. We always use to show what percentage where our funding comes from. 65% local, 3% federal, 32% state. The state scares me a little bit, but we'll continue to get into that. So with the revenue concerns, you can see where our, where our real estate tax revenue has come in. We've increased each year by a substantial amount. Our current, what we currently brought in this year, we're at 15.59 million dollars at our 24.1815 mills. Our collections with our milage bump, we only went up about two, well, not only, but we went up 2.2 million dollars in property assessment value in the district. So we were able to budget with our milage, milage adjustment up to 15.79 million. So, and as I continued to say through this with the COVID, that's even with the decrease in our collection rate that we expect to see from the COVID-19. So we budgeted that, we budgeted a couple percent lower with our collection rate, but we still see it at 15.79 with the milage rate adjustment. With that, a property tax freeze on us, I did the math today, we would see a loss of $640,000 in revenue. So once again, that would take us from 1.39 million to a 2.03 million dollar deficit, which for our district, that would be pretty devastating. As I said earlier, local income tax, the expected decrease is 15% to 25%. Who, looks like we're starting to open it a little bit in our area. So that's good. But on the other end of it, if we go back to the red phase, do we have to go bump it down another two and a half percent? And then how long we're out? Our budgets are going to be done, our budgets are going to be done. And at a certain point, we're not going to know how long people are going to be out of work and such, especially with some of these businesses closing completely, or even businesses not bringing as many employees back. Per the 2008 recession, it took us seven years to see real estate tax revenue recover. Now, a little bit of that was the reassessments and, well, the, the property tax reassessments in 2012 delayed that recovery because of how they, they changed, what forced us to change the milage rates. But I really did not see that full recovery, I think, until the 14, 15 school year where we were just getting just as much property tax revenue as we were getting before that 2008 recession. So that's, that's the other concern is when we take a look out at a five-year budget that I from, when are we going to get the revenues with costs, costs with people, contracts moving forward and such? That's it. I'm a realty tax transfer projected a possible 30% decrease. So that's what I use when I calculate our real estate transfer tax, which previously I want to say brought in 159,000 and we bumped it to about 106. One of the other things I thought this was a useful slide from the PASBO presentation was the state budgeting issues. One comment that's not on here is there were, what was the concern? Sorry, I'll jump back to that. But with the state, state budget right now, they're billions of dollars short. So when they refer on this slide of the ARRA netting, I believe that was federal funding. I wasn't around at that point, the business manager world, but right now they're doing a care, the CARES Act. It's a stimulus plan with the schools. The concern with the CARES Act is the state is the one allocating it. The feds aren't directly giving it to us. So the state can use that to make our basic education funding, which is our biggest, biggest portion of that funding and over around the four and a half million dollar mark. Well, they can take that funding and make our funding whole. We don't know how they're going to support that yet until Governor Wolf in the, in the House come to a finalization on the budget and what they're going to give for education. So we're allocated around with the projections right now, 458,000. So we could get that 458,000, but they could also drop the basic education funding and say this CARES Act stimulus is supplementing what you're getting from the basic education's funding and this will make you whole. So we see no additional revenue. We do not know what they're going to do yet. In addition to that CARES Act, it's, they divvied it out like title funding. So some of that portion minimal, we'll have to go, we'll go to non-publics. In addition to that going to non-publics, it had, like title funding, it has to go to specific expenditures, psychologists, certain COVID expenses if you need them. So there's several dynamics to it. Now, my understanding at this point is not new programs. It's things you can supplement with it. Expenditures you can supplement with it from how PASBO is interpreting it at this point. So it's, it's not something we can add to the budget right this moment. Hopefully, the state keeps us whole and adds us on, but they do have the ability to cut their funding and make it whole. So that kind of sums up that with our state subsidies. So we'll see what happens. We'll see if, it'd be great if there was an additional funding with the CARES Act too, but that's not necessarily in the plan at the moment. Okay. Yearly revenue comparisons. As we said, the only, the only way in a district really to increase the revenue at the local level where you can see a significant bounce is the milage rates. So you can see how our local revenue is the one that really only has as, the only one that has remained consistent that has gone up. Now we're in a position where we're staying steady with our, steady with our revenue, where our expenditures just keep increasing and increasing. So this year, this year complicates it with the COVID and the reductions we're taking in some areas of the local tax revenue. We should be very happy if the state revenue stays very, very stagnant. If it stays stagnant, that's probably the best we can hope for this year. And I spoke about the federal stimulus package at this point. They don't know if they're supplementing what we currently get with the basic education funding or that, that will be an add-on. So we cannot budget for that yet. If we can budget for that and basic education stays the same, that could be a decrease in our, in our final budget. Hopefully, we get some guidance on that before the school year's over or before the budgets, budgets end completely. Our expense overview, this is a graph. This will be posted on the website. Yeah, you can, once again, as always, you see where our main hitter is. It's salary and benefits, $21.4 million of a $30 billion budget over, around 75% there. So.
Chris, I have a question about this. And you had a similar chart a few slides back. Where, yeah, there, there was a similar chart earlier back comparing where our revenue comes from. And it showed, I think, our state or our local, I think our local revenue was
65.
65% of where revenue comes from. And this shows our salaries and benefits being 71, you like between 71 and 72% usually. How does that compare to, how do both of those compare to our peers? You know, if we were to look at school districts similar to ours, what is normal for a school district to rely on local tax revenue versus state and federal funding? And then same thing for salaries and benefits. How do we compare to, to peers?
I think we're, honestly, I think we're very standard unless you're in a distressed district with no local tax income where the state is at that point balancing your books with funding and such. And otherwise, I think we're right, right there with everything. Now, my guess, salary and benefits can, can swing from 66 to probably 75% based on where you're at in your salary schedule with your teaching staff and professional staff. So I, I think that's your window, 66 to 75%, but I think you're, you're pretty close. Now, districts with more commercial real estate, depending on their medium, median household values and such, you probably see a little bit more local tax because based on the title formulas and stuff, we get, we might get equal formula or even more than say, school district bigger than us as a South VAD, just based on some of your numbers with your, your calculations with the basic education funding, the Title I. It just depends on the economics of your district. But I, I think we're kind of right in between there. I think you're going to see anywhere from 60 and 70% in local, local revenue, unless you're a distressed school district where the state actually has to keep you running. And then I think you're going to see 66 to 75% in most school districts in salary and benefits based on, based on where you're at in your salary scale. And we're kind of creeping up where we're getting to the flip in our salary scale, where we'll have more teachers over step than under with that stepping at step 14 and it not being a spread out at that point.
But even with that bump up, we're still within the range of what you consider, center mass or kind of normal expected for.
Yeah. Once again charter schools, we talk about this every time. We implemented the Seneca Valley cyber that has brought some kids out of this, out of the charter schools. Unfortunately, it seems like there's no movement to change up these expenses. This year we paid 14.1 million for regular ed, special ed, 30 points, or not millions, sorry, 14,185 dollars per student, 30,653 dollars per special ed student. So we did see increases. There are talks of freezing that. Now that will be interesting how that math works out based on our expenditures this year might be kind of consistent with last year. So it could be good, it could be bad. Transportation is a big deduction in that. So those costs keep exploding, there's no regulation on them. So that's another thing we have concern for is kids moving out of our district. So, you know, it is good to keep, keep programs in our district to be an attractive school district. Said earlier, around 71% of expenses, I do think we are in the ballpark of most districts. Peasers, that's all, that's always one, one of the things they say with Peasers is due to this financial crisis. Not next year, our rates set, but future years could go up more than projected to kind of replace some of this money that's been lost in this crisis, the COVID crisis. This year it's 34.51%. So, so we'll see where that goes. That might add increased expenditures compared to what we had, what, what Peasers currently has projected, which we used in the five-year budget plan. So also we, we did an exercise just to kind of see like how much, how much flexible expenditures that we have. We put in salary, I put in transportation, charter schools, special ed costs. And when you really get into it, when you're looking at your school supplies and just some general professional, um, you know, me to run my programs out of my office that run our accounting program. We looked at, we have like 1.3% of the budget that isn't somewhat we have to use. So there's very little of a budget to cut. That's why you have to work on every contract. If you can get some, some money down by committing multiple years on something you feel confident you're going to be at. Like the whole, whole process we did with reducing buses, we got that down as far as we could. So we continue to try to work on those areas, but there are areas you just have to spend at that point. It's how low can you get those costs?
Chris, regarding that 1.3 number, because you had sent something to us, showing how you came up with a calculation.
Yes.
And I understand your thinking there. I guess as a point of clarification, however, in fact, we, there's several areas of our budget that we can reduce, isn't it? I mean, it's more, it seems to me that maybe a timing issue. That is, it's something you can maybe do before the beginning of the year, but not do at the end of the year. You know, we have, as I look at it, we do have options. You had an example in there, for example, transportation. We could cut transportation. I'm not suggesting we cut transportation. But it is an expense that could be looked at and could be modified. Sports could be looked at and modified, but you had them. So I guess just for a point of clarification, I don't, I don't, I think it'd be a mistake for us to go away from this thinking. We only could cut or adjust in expenses a little more than 1% of what we have. I think we understand we're going to have to look at possibly doing more than that. And that, I mean, that's, that's something we can't do. It's just, I, I, what I'm taking from what you're saying is it's something we need to do. It's better to do it at the beginning of the year than try to do it in the midst of the year. Would that be fair to say?
Well, you want to, you would want to act on something you're doing for next year within the next month.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes.
But we have, I mean, there's more than, you, you guys are a great example. You've identified, been, been very creative in identifying a lot of different areas where we can tighten our budget and you've reduced expenditure, expenditures by well more than 1%. So, um, you know, and to you and John for doing that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to show with something with that spreadsheet, like, okay, here are your costs with the IU. Here are your costs with transportation. You know, just to give you a, give a general sense of the percentages you see in each area. And it's like, well, when you really get down to what you're spending with certain supplies and stuff, you are, it is a minimal amount there. So when people just say cut paper, it really doesn't do that much out of that 1.3%.
Fair enough. I mean, I, I, I looked at that and I thought, you know, debt service.
Which were very, very minimal.
Well, that service clearly you got to pay that. Charter schools, uh, a few things we have absolutely no control of. But I think most of those other items, we do have some level of control. Now granted, you know, you commit to a contract, an employment contract, for example. Now you may be locked in for some years, but at some point in time, we do have a level of control to be able to say, we won't, we won't be spending this amount of money or this much money in this area. So just wanted to make that one point. Thank you.
Okay, and getting into your debt point, we only have $389,000 in debt payments, which is very low for the school district. That includes Energy Saber Project, computer lease, and the Network Core Project. We, that analysis was done of the projects. We are going to try to wrap over $80,000, if not, that was on that original list. We're, we're going to wrap in more than that. We're doing the asphalting. We, we came up where we needed a pool, pool heater. So that's getting, that's getting fixed. We're doing corrections on the stage that needed, needed done and such. So we're trying to knock out as many, many projects this year as possible before the school year wraps up to eliminate those going forward with where we see our budget at currently. So, and that's the other thing, how long is this going to take us to recover? As we use, the only thing we really have to use that's recent is that 2008, where it caused the real estate tax a lot to recover. But what it didn't really hammer was the local, local income tax revenue based on the fact, you know, there was high unemployment, but nothing like the spikes we have now. So, so we really have to see where that plays out when, when building into the future right now. And it's a little bit, it is an unknown. So we were asked to put the five-year budget together with the hope to have after five years was, was the number. Right, I'll ask Jude or David this, were we around $882,000 we were looking to have remaining at the budget at that point, at the end of five years?
I think it was 700 and change in addition to, we had had a reserve for capital projects, but that would have been spent down by that point in time, but yeah, somewhere in that range.
So we use certain assumptions in this budget and we just kind of wanted to get this to the start of it and then work back at that point and see what we could do. And there was no specific capital projects used in this. And what, what really is, so say the 1920 budget, we were 28.875 million dollars. So this year with the COVID, where we were seeing about million dollar increases in our revenue each year, we were, we're pretty stagnant right now with the projection. And we could have, I don't think we took it aggressive like probably a lot of school districts did, saying, okay, we're going to 20% with the local income tax. I, as I said, we stayed pretty stagnant this year. And then the hopes are, we took the basis, I took a percentage kind of of what things had went up in previous years and moved forward with that. And that was based to recover. It wasn't, okay, we're, we're back at this $2 million in local income tax revenue. Okay, we're going up a couple percent each year from that. So instead of 2 million from that, 1.75 million we had last year, we're up 2% from that. And kind of the same thing with the real estate tax with recovery. So you can see where the revenue, okay, we went up six, almost $600,000 from 21, 2021 to 2122, went up about a little bit over $700,000 from 2122 to 2223. So you can see how the revenue increases over that five-year span. And where our expenses, you can see through that how our expenses are just outs, outpacing what we're bringing in revenue wise with, with us being so unsure how the state will recover, how the feds will recover. Because the other thing we have to remember is the state is talking about billion dollar of shortfall, but keeping people, keeping everything whole this year. So we'll see where it leads. And this was based off of current contracts where they were at, if they would roll forward, where we would be at, at the end of those five years. And those are yearly losses. So we would have, this year we had 711 with that budget. Hopefully, like I said, I, I think we can get, really get that down. Then one point with that 3.1, even let's say we had a balanced budget, so 3.1 minus 1.4, 1.7. Then we take another 1.5 out of that, we're down to $200,000 and we're exceeding our funds at the end of 20, at some point in 22, 23. So, you know, the challenge the board has given us is to hit that 700,000 at the end of that 24, 25. And like we said, this comes down to us negotiating contracts, um, doing things that are sustainable for this district. So, you know, those are things that are a priority. We continue to try to manage our costs and provide an excellent education program. I think there's been a good job done of that right now. I don't think the kids have suffered too much from anything. And I think we've actually increased some programs. So that's just a quick five-year budget overlook. Any questions? And we'll keep working on that as we cut expend, try to cut some more expenditures as we get into that June 30th budget date.
Chris, I have a question. I have a question, Chris.
Sure.
Can you go back to that? Oh, there we go. Never mind. There, there, there's my question right there answered. I was, I was going to ask, when we look at that five-year mark, how negative are we? Like how in debt or how insolvent are we as a district?
Right.
It looks like we're seven, between seven and eight million dollars in solvent.
Right, right. Somebody requested this chart, so I made a special effort on it.
I think it's, Jude, I will say this, I don't think it's correct to say how in debt we are because, uh, as I understand it, under the school code, we would not be able to do this. We, we can't run a negative fund balance. So that's why, as Chris points out, three years out, we zero out on our fund balance, which means in those subsequent years, when there's a 2 million, 2.1, 2.4 million dollar deficit, we have to make in those years, two plus million dollar cuts because there's no fund balance. And that I think is what real challenges for Chris and John here to be able to do going forward.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure.
Last chart, um, the Carleton five-year projection, if you could go back to that chart. Okay, on pay, on, on line 100 salary and 200 benefits.
Okay.
Between this year and next year, salaries are going down $110,000, which is good. But why are benefits going up $265,000?
Um, I, I'd have to look at a line-by-line analysis.
You see it, you see it right there. It's a comparison between line 11 and line 12.
Yeah, but well, benefits go up a certain percentage, um, your taxes are still, still certain level. Peasers goes up. So there's a couple of things that go up. Like I said, I'd have to go through and do the line-by-line analysis on it. I, I kind of plugged the numbers into a spreadsheet where, where I auto-calc everything.
It's not a definite number. These aren't, especially for the benefits to jump that much when salaries drop that much.
Um, well, here's the thing, when somebody, without retirements, we have too. We may be losing salary, but people are covered, you know, a lot of people are covered up to 65 through our contracts. So even though people retire, we are still paying their benefits, you know, which could be for a family. Say you have somebody retire at 56 years old. If they're in our teacher's contract, they're covered under benefits till 65. Say their spouse is two years younger than them, their spouses on that. So we cover it at a married and say at that point, say this, this individual has a kid 16. That, that child can be to young adult could be on those benefits till they're 25 or 26. So you're paying a $20, $22,000 amount. So even though these people retire, you don't lose their benefits. So that, that could be a part, that's another reason. So with increases in that, increasing in Peasers, you're also paying benefits on it, benefits on people that are retired. And when an aide retires, we don't, it, it actually costs us money when an aide retires because you could continue to pay their insurance. But the next person that comes in, the way the aides contract, now the SCA is set up, they come in at the same salary. It's not such like a teacher, or so if a teacher, we lose a teacher that retired, that's top of the scale, that teacher that comes in to replace that teacher comes in at $42, $43,000 at the bottom of our scale. So we automatically, we might be paying their benefits for three to seven to 10 years, but we're no longer paying, we lose $60,000 in salary on top of their P, their Peasers percentage, the percentage they're paying in taxes. So it, it's a whole, it's a whole bucket of money you lose off that person. But if an aide comes in, the aides aren't based on how many years they've worked for the district. They're based on, okay, this year all aides get a 3% raise. So instead of making $21,000, they're making $21,630,000. But that aide that retired, we're paying, we're paying their benefits with the new aide that came in. So if both those aides had families still, we're paying a whole family benefit package. That just adds to our expenses when an aide retires. Unless, unless you would not, unless that was a position that not, did not need replaced. So that's where, you know, some of this, we, we have a lot of retired folks that are still, still on our benefits right now.
Okay, I have another question. We have a lot of two-teacher households. So are you able to keep track that if there are two teachers, one of them retires from our school district, do, do you keep track that there, if, if there's, if the spouse is an active teacher and is covering, is, is it possible that person could recover, could be covering in medical benefits, our retiring teacher? Can you keep track of that?
Well, let me, can I ask this? Are you saying both teachers are in Carlington or one of the teachers?
No, no, because that would be, if it were in Carlington, you could check on it, but if it's from another.
Based on our contracts, they have the right to take our benefits. So their spouse could say work at, what's the neighboring district, Montour. Their spouse could work at Montour. They're retired. Their district may give them a $5,000 payout for not to, we, we give a payout for not taking our benefits. So you're retired, um, that spouse works in Montour, they get a $5,000 payout. We pay your family benefits. It's within their rights within that contract.
I see, I see, but you can.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, well, it doesn't matter. We don't, we don't need to keep track of it because we're on the hook for regardless. Yeah, it doesn't matter where their spouse works. That like some companies, I'll give an example, I, I believe with my parents setup is one example. You have to, to be on my mom's insurance, which is a much better plan. My father has to take his insurance at work. So some people have that, but within our contract, if they retire from here, they can have their spouse on it until they're 65. Can you hear me still? Yeah, am I good? Okay.
It says apparently my internet is unstable. It's not yours.
So, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just in our contract.
Okay, you've, you've explained it sufficiently. Thanks, Chris.
No problem. So that, so that wraps up the budget presentation. So I'll stop that chair. Let me see if there's any more.
Your video.
Talking anymore, Chris.
Again, Chris. Still can't hear you. Well, I think if we're in the absence of, of, we're not able to, to hear Chris at this time, and it appears he can't hear me either. Does the board have? Does the board have any follow-up questions for Chris at this time?
I do, John. I've got a couple. So, um, the first is, when we talk about, um, uncertainty on, I mean, clearly. Everything y'all have done over the last couple of months to get us closer to a balanced budget was, um, really kind of. Um, unbalanced, set off balance and kind of disrupted by the whole coronavirus pandemic. And then how that, how that impacts our budget for next year, there's just a lot of uncertainty. There's just a lot of unknowns, you know, and it, both on the upside and downside, but mostly on the downside. Um, so both, you know, primarily on risk, but there's some opportunity there too, when you, when you look at, on the, on the, uh, revenue, but also on expense side. So I, I think it would be helpful, because, you know, if you go back to a couple. One of the last slides there where you showed the five-year plan, um, and where we end up. Right now, at year five, where we have a between seven and $5 million, not even deficit, just in the hole that we can't spend. Um, I think it would be helpful to be able to look at, um. Those uncertainties, and I, I feel like you, there's gotta be a way to look at them where, from left to right. You've got kind of the, here's the most damage and here's the least damage, right? Like a max and men, or men and max, and then, and obviously the worst-case scenario and best-case scenario are very low probability. And then the middle, those things are a little bit more probable happening. Trying to understand where we fall, like the revenue assumptions, where do we fall in that spectrum would be helpful. Um, and then the second thing would be. Steps between now and June, when we have to approve an actual budget. And then, so that's like step 1A, and step 1B is between this year and next year, where we're looking at a 2021 or 2020. Or 2021, 2022 budget. You know, where do we see ourselves being, and then some of those risks, at that point, we should know the answer to. You know, so understanding the milestones between now and June, and then between June and next December or next March. And where the, where the, where we'll know the final answer on those. I think that both of those would be helpful as we decide whether or not to approve a budget and a five-year plan. That does or does not get us to a balanced budget in five years. And I don't, you know, a lot of that is probably requires a lot more work than is possible to answer right now. But I, I think, um, those are two things that I think would be very helpful to understand.
Well, we have, we have reductions that, you know, we, we can discuss it at a different point that I think Dr. Cryd and I, our plan was to have those during. During our executive committees and such next, next week, and I mean, I have, we have some of those together this evening. Um, like I said, this is probably not the format to discuss anything such as that. But, um, we have to, we do have to determine how our programs are gonna look and what. What you're doing at that point where. You're not an attractive, attractive district at that point, so that are, those are some determinations we have to make. And I do believe we have, um, some thoughts on that, that will be shared in a different format.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I think that's why it would help to understand that risk profile.
I have a couple of questions as well, um, although I'd first like to mention to, to the group. Um, that, uh, John and Chris very kindly, uh, were able to meet with Jude and me yesterday. Uh, Jude and I had some questions, we were following up on some of the work that we had done. So again, I appreciate John and Chris, you guys making time yesterday, uh, we talked about some of these items. Um, to follow up with Jude's points, for me, I look at this five-year projection. And, uh, what stands out is the fact, I keep in mind that, uh, we can't, uh, we can't run a negative fund balance. Uh, that's in this school code, that's in the state statute. So when you look at the five-year projection, and I know this is just projecting out, and it's making certain assumptions and, and all. But, uh, it's, it's concerning to all of us that after five years, we've got a negative $7 million, uh, amount in the fund balance. Uh, which we can't do. So the question then is, when do we start making the necessary adjustments? And take the necessary steps to be able to, uh, change these, the slopes of these curves? So that we don't go into the negative and just what are the nature of those things? And Chris alluded to the fact that you guys are working on some things, uh, but the. I, I, I just, I guess I hope that we all can agree and recognize that. We should not and, and will not approve budgets in the future, certainly we're not faced at it with this immediate budget. But budgets in the future that would result in a negative fund balance, that's, that's the first thing. And then toward that end, um, I, I sent this summary out, uh, again, uh, in there, we note that. The determination as to how much fund balance to use this year should be, uh, should involve. An, an assessment of how the fund balance will continue to be used in subsequent years. We don't want to use, for example, two-thirds of our fund balance this year and be able to put together a budget. But then we have so little fund balance left, how do we manage things going forward? So that was the idea of having some kind of plan, and that's what I took the five-year. I won't say that's, that's what the five-year projection is, but I take it as, uh, a starting point or a, uh, a, a foundation toward moving there. So, uh, you know, for me, as we go forward and we approach the vote in June. For me to feel comfortable to approve a budget that uses a certain amount of fund balance. I, I really need to see how we're managing that fund balance over time, because I don't want to find that we spend it all in two or three years. And then in that fourth year, we've got to suddenly cut $2 million out of our budget. I mean, no one wants to face that. So I, I don't, I don't know how that's done, and it's easy for me to sit here and say all that, because all the work falls on other people. But I think the reality is, as, as directors, the responsible thing is for us to manage our resources as best as we can. We're, we're not here to micromanage John and Chris as they're running the district. But I do think it's, it's prudent for us to, to, to watch over what we have and to provide some parameters. Uh, that we are comfortable with as we move forward. So I, I would hope that we'd have something, um, prior to the vote in June, that we can look to to say, okay. You know, this is the plan, this is how we're gonna get there, all along, you know, the plan being, we're working toward in year five. No reliance on the fund balance, uh, you know, we call it a balanced budget, but it's basically no reliance on the fund balance. And, um, we have a certain minimum, we talked before about a 700,000, well, it may have to be, given this pandemic, that minimum. May end up being zero, uh, we just have to deal with that, um, but it can't be below zero. So, uh, I, I'd like to see, I, I would need, I need a plan, I need to see what does year five look like? If, uh, after using the fund balance that you're gonna ask us, uh, to, to grant you for this upcoming year.
Yeah, David, I would just add that it's clear that there are huge assumptions that have to be made.
Absolutely.
That are gonna be wrong.
Yes.
They're just necessary and they're reasonable. So it's also important just to highlight those so that we understand what they are and we agree that. We don't know what, whether they're right or wrong, but we, they're reasonable and they're probably gonna be wrong. But as long as we accept that, I, I think we know that assumptions have to be made. We should have to talk about them.
A, a budget is an assumption in its totality. Um, it's just what, what, what our, our guys here are having to deal with, it's the fact that, um, the unknowns for this coming budget are so great. So out of whack with what any normal year would be, uh, it becomes, uh, it tremendously difficult to try to put something together. So I, I also wanted to add though quickly, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep going on. But when you look at the five-year projection that, that Chris has gotten together, uh, compare it to some of the. Uh, numbers that Jude and I had put out, where we were speculating the levels of expenditures that we might be able to sustain. Um, Chris and John have actually got expenditures going out five years under those numbers. So in, in their five-year projection, they're coming $426,000 under in total spending for that five-year period. Than what Jude and I were saying, it looked like the upper limit were. So the area of expenditures where you could have, can control things more easily, kudos to you both, um, for, for doing that. Uh, damn this pandemic, because now you gotta deal with revenue we have no control, so. Again, good job.
Thank you, David, and I, I, I think you're right, I think all of our, all of our board members share those same concerns when you look at these numbers. And it goes across, I think it, um, you see in some cases, based on where we were two months ago. And looking at the numbers we have in front of us now, um, it can be shocking and, and in some ways, a little bit discouraging naturally. And I think both you and Jude have very valid points, is that there are, uh, risks that we, not necessarily risks, but forecasts. That we need to make and determine how accurate are those forecasts going to be? Um, and those are the, the parts that we rely upon, different models from a lot of different, um. Of the agencies that we subscribe to and then listen to and, uh, get information from. And it is, it's going to vary from one community to the next as well, as far as how the pandemic, uh, has an impact. So I think there are some very short-term decisions that we do need to make. And then I think there might be a, a part where we do sit back and we wait to see how the economy responds to it. What I don't want to do is make any, uh, a knee-jerk reaction and have that, uh, make decisions. Where we are pulling services away from our students or, uh, creating an environment where we're not doing, uh, the best services that we can for our community. And I think that you're right in the sense that it, it takes a certain risk level to. How far do we go with additional strategic moves in regard to, to our budget? And I think those are some of the things that Chris and I will need to work on and figure out for you.
John, I, I, I think you made very good points. One of the concerns I also have is that if in budgeting, we are, say, conservative in, um. Defining conservative as I'm guessing a little, little low on revenues and a little high on expenditures. Uh, that exacerbates the level of, uh, fund balance usage. And could actually present a scenario that is worse than actually, the actual will be. If we're making decisions in staffing and services based on that, yeah, we're gonna have a scenario, just like you're speaking of. But we're making reductions in services that, as it turns out, we don't need to. But we, we also need to keep that balance with the fact that if we don't do some things, if we don't do what is necessary, if we don't hit that middle ground. Then in the future, we're gonna be, find ourselves in a scenario where we have to make cuts much greater in that one year, uh, than we had to. That, that scares me equally.
Hey, David. I, I, I agree with your, uh, your point and Jude, both of you guys. I think the question I have, and maybe some other people have, is. What does that new budget dynamic look like in 30 days or in 60 days or in 90 days? And are some of the pretty drastic possibilities, are they going to come to fruition? Or are they gonna be much less severe than we speculate? Or if they are severe, is there going to be some sort of, uh, relief coming from the state or the federal government? And I, I, I think we probably are all asking that question. We don't wanna, we don't want to underestimate those and find ourselves in a hole and then not having money to do the things that we need to do. But we also don't want to be too aggressive and cut too quickly, um, and cut, you know, I'd say like it to the bone, uh, if we don't need to either. So where does that fine line get drawn? And maybe to your point, what are the next couple of steps over the next couple of weeks and months? What are the gates that we have to go through? And when do we get information from the state or the Department of Ed, which helps us, um, make better decisions along some of those questions?
Jim, I, I think this goes right along with what Jude has alluded to earlier and what, uh, he's provided with us, and that's a risk analysis. Uh, it is, we are making assumptions, we've gotta do the best we can, knowing that the, the variance in certain areas is gonna be great. What will be our revenue next year? It's gonna be really hard to peg that down, given everything that Chris has put forward. What will our salaries be next year? It's a lot, we can, we can get pretty damn close to that number, because we know who's gonna be working. We know that the salaries are gonna be, et cetera. So, um, the whole process is trying to hit that as well as we can. Uh, the danger is, is I think you very well pointed out, going too much one way or the other. So I, I don't think we can say we're protecting ourselves by being very conservative in what we're estimating. Uh, and, and therefore our fund balance is gonna be great, because then the argument is, well, we've gotta make some cuts to make it not so big. And conversely, to be able to say, ah, it's not gonna be that bad, you know, we, we don't need to reduce our revenue projections all that much. And then find ourselves that we've got a shortfall of $800,000, so, uh, it's risk assessment, we gotta do the best we can. The key here, I think though, is, again, as Jude pointed out, we have to understand that we are making assumptions. And, and it's not about, you know, we're not, we're not keeping score here as to how right or wrong we are. We've gotta use the best available information to make the best estimates that we can, um, to try to hit that middle ground. That's what's in my mind, key, hitting that middle ground, and that's, that'll put us in the, in the best position going forward, dealing with this.
I agree. I was gonna add, I'm gonna add two on one end of it, too, we, we have revenue uncertainty. And we really have pay scale uncertainty, because, you know, where, where we're at with our contracts and stuff, uh, with some of the professional staff. So there's a lot of uncertainty with expenses and on the other side with revenue. So, and we're, we're navigating the best, best we can, and we're gonna continue to do that, so.
Yep, I agree, Chris. I think it's just a matter of, before we have to make a decision, we need to understand what, kind of on the combined. Everything together picture looks like, what is that profile and where are we assuming we are?
Any. From every single district, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jim, I was just gonna try to close some things up here, but go ahead.
Please do, no, go ahead.
Now I was just gonna ask if there's any other comments or, or concerns to, to move forward before we adjourn.
We, we can address this in the future. I'd love to hear what the Department of Ed, if, if any guidance they're providing, love to hear what that looks like. So we can find that out for the next meeting.
Is there anything from the public? Do we have anybody left?
No, uh, at this time, there are two people, um, in here, and nobody has raised their hand, um, to be noted.
So, um, maybe Josh, give them a little direction as if they wanna comment or raise their hand, how they do that, maybe they're not familiar with that.
Uh, yeah, uh, right on the screen there, uh, if you are an attendee here, um, you could just click the, the hand. Um, button, and that will show on the screen here, and then I will acknowledge you and allow you to speak.
And I don't see any movement over there with any hands being raised or any questions being, uh, asked. Uh, so I will, uh, thank, uh, we did have a total of three people visiting in on, uh, on the Zoom. And then we may have also had people listening in, uh, through the YouTube channel as well. We appreciate everybody who tuned in this evening, uh, to listen to the budget presentation. At this time, we will conclude the meeting, and once again, please follow along with all of our announcements via our website, and, uh, thank you very much.